All the meaning to order, please stand and try to make a pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united nation under God, indivisible, liberating, just as it's called.
First up on the agenda is recognitions, turn it over to Sandy.
Thank you. We are proud to announce that Molly Dato was recently named the Wisconsin Secondary Physical Education Teacher of the Year. She also had a surprise announcement at the Wisconsin Health and Physical Education Conference in October, as she was also named the 2019 Midwest Secondary Teacher of the Year. Molly teaches ninth grade PE and dance at Hudson High School. She also oversees Rhinestone Raiders, a unique opportunity for regular ed and special needs students. Recipients of the Teacher of the Year Award must conduct a quality physical education program as reflected by standards, using various teaching methodologies, serve as a positive role model for the profession, participate in professional development opportunities, and provide professional leadership through presentations, leadership, and writing. Congratulations Molly. We'll ask you to come up one, just to let, tell us a little bit about what happens next. Now that you've earned the award, what happens now?
Well, I'm excited to say that I'm heading to Tampa in April, and I'm going to meet with the other district recipients as we plan then for our national presentation the following year in Salt Lake City. And so, I know that the year ahead will be busy, but I'm excited to take on the challenge and it's been a pretty incredible experience so far, meeting and collaborating with so many outstanding teachers in the state and now going to be the nation, so.
Well, we know you're going to do an outstanding job representing not only Wisconsin, but the Hudson School District as you proceed.
Thank you.
Any comments from the board?
Mr. President?
Rob.
I'd be excited about going to Tampa as well.
I am excited. Alright, thank you.
So are you going to Tampa for being the Wisconsin Fire Teacher of the Year or for being the Midwest Teacher of the Year?
That's more for the Midwest level, because I'm representative of six different states. And those recipients then are up for the national award that will be announced in Tampa. So.
Excellent. Any other comments? Otherwise, thank you for, you know, being involved and congratulations on this award. Thank you for representing our high school.
Thanks Molly. Next, we'll invite up our FFA Floriculture Team. They competed in the national competition recently. We're pleased to share that they earned a Silver Level Award while representing the state of Wisconsin at the National FFA Floriculture Event in October. The team placed first at the regional competition and second at the state competition in Madison. And with us this evening are members of the team along with Cynthia Landers, Hudson's Agriculture Education Teacher and FFA Advisor. The Floriculture Career Development Event requires students to identify plants, judge flower arrangements, and solve problems. Participants also demonstrate skills in flower arranging, propagation, and the preparation of floral and foliage products for sale. So I'll let them introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about what the competition was like, what they had to do.
I'm short. Hi, I'm Emily Larson. I was the leader this year for the Floriculture Team.
I'm Rachel Ball.
I'm Emma Philippiak.
So as you mentioned, we do like arranging plants and corsages and problem solving and plant ID. But in Nationals, we also had to do a job interview. That was different, that was scary, but we did well. And it was actually quite an all encompassing exam test of all floral industry. And I know, at least I personally, I'm now very excited to one day go into the floral or horticultural industry.
We spent a lot, we spent a lot of time training for the competition, which included, we met with one of our old FFA members' parents, Andy Favilla, and we studied multiple floral designs. And by the end, we're doing it like three times a week. And we also went downtown to the Hudson Floral Shop and practiced doing job interviews and what we would need to know to like work at a floral shop.
And then kind of overall, the experience that we had was really good for a lot of leadership opportunities. And we also got to network with a bunch of other FFA members in our country. So that was really fun.
Emma, would you tell us too, in that bottom right corner, what is it, what's something extra you did beyond the competition?
We, after we had made all of our floral arrangements, we visited nursing homes and donated all of our bouquets and corsages to the elderly.
Thank you. So both a competition as well as kind of thinking along the lines of career opportunities in the, like you said, the area of both floriculture and horticulture. Very nice. Alright, thank you. Congratulations.
The fourth team member is Lizzie Shusick, and she's at Nebraska going to college for plant science. And she left college to come join us and compete with the team. So it's really fun.
Alright, any comments or questions from the board?
I have a question. So what kind of job might a horticulturist do? What kinds of things are out there?
I'm too short. Well, it would be like cultivating new plants or it could also include kind of like working in a greenhouse, taking care of the plants, which I suppose would also go into like, you know, sales and that sort of stuff. Lots of taking care of plants, which I really enjoy, so.
Congratulations again. Thank you for representing Hudson School District.
And then next, we have our Fall Athletics. Erin Moan, Assistant Activities Director is with us this evening to help share the highlights of the fall season.
First off, thank you for having us and taking the time to allow us to come in and share the positive experiences that these students and coaches behind me have gone through in the last couple of months here. A couple of things to recognize right away. We operate as an extension of the classroom and we like to make sure that we are student athletes and students first. Up here, we have our top GPAs in each sport. These are highly competitive students in the classroom and on the field. And we find it very important to recognize that accomplishment. It takes an immense amount of time, not only in the classroom, but on the field. And all together is a very, very admirable achievement for all 10 of those student athletes. We also welcomed three coaches to our staff this year. We have two co-head coaches for girls swim in Caitlin and Julia, and then John Dahl as a head girls tennis coach. And a couple of things I'd like to highlight before we, other things I'd like to highlight before we get into the individual sports. We developed a partnership with the Positive Coaching Alliance this fall. And they work with a few area organizations, youth sports organizations in the community as well. But we signed a three-year agreement. We believe in PCA. They give us the tools to build, build on top of the culture that we're already trying to put in place. They give us tools to provide professional development for our student athletes, our coaches, our parents, our community. And as I move down to AMP, that's Athletes Making Progress. That's a group I get to work with, student athlete leaders. We had, we did a workshop with PCA last Thursday morning. And it was nothing short of amazing with 20 students in the room talking about leadership for an hour and a half. They send a trainer. He was NBA youth organization through the Timberwolves. He does a lot of their instruction at youth camps. Came in and worked with 20 of our student athlete leaders in breaking down why we do what we do, how we want to be remembered. And it was, again, nothing short of amazing. And we got to end with a little Chipotle too. But as we get into what we're going to do with that, PCA is helping us give those tools. And that's been an important partnership and we've only been together about a month now. So it's been a great start. The last thing with AMP, they had an opportunity as well on October 25th to meet with Rotary. Rotary came to Hudson High School. I saw some of you there. We collaborated together. And it was a cool joint opportunity for our students and Rotarians to get together and talk about three initiatives. And our AMP students came up with these three initiatives as what they want to focus on this year. And that's increasing recognition and appreciation for all activities, not just sports, but clubs and activities as well. We have increasing school spirit and attendance at all activities. We're going to start doing a game of the week that's going to balance out throughout the entire school year, that's going to highlight a different type of game. We also have plays and music concerts that are going to be worked into those as well. We have beautiful new projectors. If you haven't been into the high school yet, all of you have, but they have the opportunity to be able to display that. Where in the past, we'd be making posters and trying to put them in spaces around the school and we were missing quite a large audience. Now we have the opportunity to create that idea and help the students follow through with it. And then the last one, we're looking at purchasing an interactive TV. That'll be in the forum area. And what that will allow us to do is create a digital trophy case, to create interactive schedules and maps of our school and allow all that are coming into our facility to be able to interact with the TV to help them learn more about what we're doing at Hudson High School and Hudson School District. So those three things, our students got to break into teams with Rotary members and problem solve. We were able to give our students the opportunity to sit down with people who have been in their shoes before. It was a great, a great experience. As far as highlights, that will wrap up what I have to say. I'd like to get to the coaches and the student athletes first. We're going to begin with football.
Hi, I'm Cody Sika, I was a football captain this year.
Hello, I'm Jacob Dalton, and I was a captain as well.
Also a captain, and I am Carter Reimer.
I'm Kaiser Altobrand, we are the four captains.
Alright, so first off, I'd like to start by saying we obviously didn't have the season we wanted, based on our finish. But we did meet some goals, like beating River Falls for 10 straight years, which was pretty sweet. We also beat Stevens Point for the first time ever in history. And I'd like to speak for the seniors by saying we honestly had one of the best times of our lives this year. Thank you.
Any questions?
How does it feel to beat Stevens Point? I grew up in Wausau and we never did.
You got it?
Yeah, so I've lost to Stevens Point three times before we beat them. And it was pretty devastating every time. Two, two times we're in the playoffs, two years in a row, and we lose. Last year, at the start of the season too against them. But yeah, it was, it was really like satisfying to beat them, especially the way we did, going to their place and just pounding them, so, yeah. And then as you said about River Falls too, like no, no team has ever done that before in Hudson history and we beat them 10 straight years in a row. So that's something that we're very proud of.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Hi, I'm Katie Tomy, and I'm one of the swim captains.
I'm Rachel Baker, and I'm one of the swim captains.
I'm Sunlee Batten, and I'm the third swim captain.
So this year, we went seven and O in conference and we got third at sectionals.
And then we had all three of our relays and eight girls went to state and we got 24th out of 40 teams. And we got 22.5 points, which is the most we've ever scored since 2014.
Overall, we had a really successful season with over, with 100% of our swimmers improving their times with the help of our great coaches this year.
Yeah, that was a good year. Now, wasn't Eau Claire used to be the nemesis on the swim dive? They won like lots of years in a row?
Yeah. It's still our biggest competition, but we're still trucking along.
Well, good job being Eau Claire then, and congratulations on a good year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the senior captains were unable to make it tonight. Just recognizing the senior captains as Riley Swanky, who's the top GPA earner. We had our one doubles team, which was Kate Johnson and Ani Lewis. And just quick on the academic side, I wanted to highlight the girls tennis team. We had 14 letter winners and 13 of the 14 were recognized as academic all-conference, so 3.5 GPA or higher, which was very awesome to see just as a coach that they did that above and beyond. So real quick, we finished second in the conference. Our overall record is actually 21 and 2. And so the first time in program history, we finished with over 20 wins, which was an awesome accomplishment for the girls there. We had three girls finish second team all-conference. Those were juniors Quinn Winkowski, Laura Douglas, and Lauren Stolzman. Our junior Ella Dietrich finished first team all-conference. And we were able to send five individuals to sectionals where we finished third as a team. So overall, an outstanding season for the girls and we look forward to next year, so.
Great job, Coach. Thank you.
So my name is Olivia Gillett, and I was the senior captain.
My name is Caitlin Zignego, and I was the junior captain.
I'm Sarah Hoff, and I was also a junior captain.
And first off, we would like to say that we are proud of that we had more wins than losses this season with a conference record of three and three and an overall record of 20 and 15. And we had many ups and downs this season, but learned to pull through the hard times, coming out stronger in the end.
We also had two seniors this season and the rest of us were juniors. We finished fourth in conference and also three of our players ended up receiving all-conference awards.
This year for the season, we got to play in the new gym space for two home games and we have not lost yet in that new gym space. So, and we're excited, we are excited for next year's season. Any questions?
So are you losing the two seniors? Are those tall players or frontline players?
They're pretty short.
That's one thing, it's hard to grow more height, you know, once you get there.
Yeah, we have a pretty short team this year, so.
Okay. They're quick though. Yes, great. Well, congratulations and good luck training for next year then.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm George Bond, I was a senior captain this year. I'm Luke Krupka, I was also a senior captain.
I'm Noel Undine, and I was a junior captain this year.
Alright, so this year, we had a pretty humble start. Our first meet at Eau Claire North, I don't even think we finished top three, which was pretty disappointing. But thanks to our great coaching staff, Coach Krupa and Coach Weimer, who's her first year coaching for us, they were able to put together some great workouts that we were able to grind through. And also, some of our underclassmen, Tony Weeks up there, gave me a run for my money most of the year, so, yeah. Combination of the underclassmen showing up and our great coaching really helped us finish strong. We ended up with a first-place finish at the conference meet and also the sectionals meet. So helped us get to state, which is great, so, thank you.
Yeah, we were kind of a really close-knit team and that really helped us push each other through the workouts and helped us achieve that state appearance.
Do you have any questions?
Mr. President? So George, you know Fedora tonight?
No Fedora. Yeah, that was one of my gifts at the banquet last night, it was a Fedora, so.
Alright, I have to ask, because I know cross-country is one of those things that obviously you put in your time and practice, it can pay off in the long run, but you also have to, you know, have some gifts in being able to run, it's 5K distance, right?
Yeah.
So I saw you guys out there in August, because I go down Carmichael every morning and saw you guys running down Carmichael. How did you, how early do you start your captain's practices and get going?
Yeah, so I mean, it's a fall sport, but I really think it's played out in the summer, to be honest. I mean, kind of what you do in the summer really dictates how your season's going to go. So we do captain's practices starting in the middle of June, 7:30 every morning. We meet, weekdays, we meet, you know, get our workout in, whatever, if it's a speed workout, long run. We really had a good summer program this year, thanks to Krupa and Kale Weimer, a guy on our team, his mom. Coach Weimer is our first-year coaching. So that, yeah, we had a great program. We were able to do, you know, weight room after, some yoga training, which really paid off, I think, at the end of the season. So, yeah, if we wouldn't have worked so, as hard as we did this summer, I don't think we would have finished as strong as we did, so.
Alright, well, that's dominating when you finish four in the top five and get all five in the top 11. That's, that's a great job, good job guys. Well, how many do you have returning?
No one will be back. No one will be back. Yeah, our, we're losing a couple of seniors this year, but I think next year we'll still be strong. I think that we've got some freshmen next year coming up that are going to be pretty good, so. I think we'll have a good shot next year as well.
Alright, very good. And is Coach Krupa here tonight?
Yes.
He is totally, that's typical of his style, but anyway, Coach, congratulations too on 50 years. Way to go, good job guys.
I'm Anna Suprina, and I was the junior captain.
I'm Abby Faust, and I was the senior captain.
I'm Maria Anan, I was the other senior captain.
Okay, so a little cap of our season. We started out pretty well. We took first at most of our Wisconsin meets, I think. And we, after like a few of our meets, we started out getting some injuries on the team, which really like put a damper on us a little bit. It kind of like was mentally tough for all of us. And then at sectionals, we took third, which was really tough for us, just because we... Oh, conference, yeah, we were supposed to, oh, I'm sorry. Conference, we took third and that was really upsetting, just because we were supposed to take first and we were taking first like the rest of the season. And then we started questioning like if we were going to make it to state or not. But then sectionals came around and we were all saying our gratitude before practice and being really positive and like writing notes to each other to help boost our mental game. So then we ended up getting 17th at state, so, yeah.
Right.
Very good.
With the amount of injuries that we had this season, it was really amazing. Like, like around halfway through the season, you could tell that there was some mental blocking that happened and the way they were able to overcome those like mental blockings from the injuries is, it was really amazing, yeah. And we wouldn't be able to finish our season like we did if it weren't for our coaches who give up a lot to just be at practice every day.
Congratulations on your year.
Just a couple of quick closing thoughts. One more time for Don Krupa, 50 years. I was at the celebration last weekend and that is quite an achievement to listen to that length of time of stories packed into one hour was pretty phenomenal, so.
Alright.
One last thing is just another, I know we talked about it before, but another thank you for the facilities. We were very excited we were able to get the volleyball team in there. I'll never forget that day of the kids just buzzing as they're coming into the gym. The energy was refreshing and we're, we're very excited heading full steam into winter sports with all the facilities and the kids are, are loving it. Jacob Dalton actually today said he's not going to miss a shot all year, was it? The hoops don't, they don't, they don't miss. I guess that's my fault for saying that joke about Jacob. Thank you very much for having us tonight.
Thank you, thanks.
Hi, I'm Olivia Tennant, this is Haley Wilson, Chloe Hoff, and Ashton Randolph, captains of the varsity Raiders Dance Team. We started off our season with summer practices and hosting the junior dance camp for kids, performing in our Pepper Fest Parade that we danced at, as well as the Booster Days Parade. And we also got to attend the UDA Dance Camp in Wisconsin Dells, performing and learning two different routines that we competed in.
Once the school year started, we had the honor to perform pre-game and halftime at all football games. We also supported the team by volunteering and performing at their pigskin picnic. Before homecoming, our whole team had the opportunity to participate in the Kids Fest, which was a great way to become involved in the community. We are also excited to support the girls and boys basketball teams in their upcoming seasons.
Currently, we're working on four competition routines. We have a palm routine, a kick routine, a jazz routine, and a hip-hop routine. Kind of a lot to get ready in a few weeks, because our first competition's coming up, but that's currently what we're working on and we're really excited.
Yeah, so our first competition is December 1st and we're competing at six different competitions, one of which is at the new high school, we're hosting conferences this year, so that's pretty exciting. And yeah, so, thanks. Any questions?
Yes, President? So how far do you guys travel for your, for your competitions?
Anywhere from like, the nominee's like 45 minutes away. Our farthest is Little Shoot, which is about four hours away.
And then I recall Raiders won state in at least one of the events. Do you have like state competition in all four and then there's an all-around, or how does that work?
So at our first three competitions, they're kind of like prep competitions. We do, we do bring all four dances. And then after those competitions, we pick two which are our strongest and we bring those to conference regionals and state. Last year, we finished with two seconds. Hopefully, we're bringing a first home this year, but I guess we'll see.
Alright, very good. Well, good luck in your competition. You got a longer season than some of the ones that are just one sport, but, or one season. But anyway, thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the community service that you do as well. Didn't catch that, Rob? I was just congratulating them on the community service that they do as well. Oh, yeah. Says a lot.
I'm Paige Hillman, I'm sophomore captain.
And I'm Lauren Gerchen, I was a senior captain this year. Kind of to go over our season in like a short recap.
And this is girls golf we're talking about, right?
Yeah, this is girls golf. Okay, so as you can see up on the board, that's a picture with a fellow conference team, the nominee. So we grew not only as a team, like in our own like course and in our own practices, but we also got to know other girls really well. And they actually tweeted about our team being one of the most like sportsmanlike and one of the most fun teams to play with. So that was kind of off the course, one of our accomplishments, I guess you could say. And then on the course this year, we, last year, we finished fifth in the conference, which is okay, I guess. And then we really worked hard to improve over the summer, kind of like cross-country does. Summer is kind of for golf when you improve. And we ended up almost finishing second, but we took third, hopefully second next year. And then we had two of our players qualify for sectionals this year. And then we had one player qualify for first team all-conference and one for second team all-conference. Do you have any questions?
And would we know those people that finished in all-conference?
So Paige actually finished first and then I finished second team all-conference.
And is it Paige that's, yeah, you have two more years yet.
Yes, she does.
Alright, what, where do we play our home matches?
Our home matches are at Troy Byrne.
Alright, very good. Alright, is there any other questions?
Nice job.
Otherwise, good job showing improvement.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, did we have anybody from boys soccer?
Nobody from boys soccer.
Okay, and I saw the fall cheer and stunt was on here too.
They're gonna do it in the winter.
Oh, right.
Yep.
Cause they are another one that kind of overlapping seasons.
Right back into it.
Right, alright, very good. Alright, thank you all for your participation. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can stay for the superintendent report if you want to. No, I'm just kidding, you go ahead. Let you get out of here.
Alright, do we have any citizens requesting to speak? I know we had a large crowd, but, uh, now it looks like it's clearing out, so if there are no requests to speak, we'll move on to superintendent's report. So which topic do you wanna take first?
Well, I mean, just for the record, the tight rolled pants were in stash, uh, were in style when I was in early elementary school, but, um, but for some of you that were doing that in college, that's fine too. But, uh, no, wanna, I'm gonna touch on a couple of these, a couple of these items. Uh, we have the, uh, construction update as we're getting ready to wind down with the high school. Uh, a couple of things. Um, the move in for the last part of the building is, is happening the Wednesday before, uh, Thanksgiving break. Is we're moving into area K. Uh, that area's coming along quite well, uh, working through that. They've started clearing out the parking lots. We would anticipate that we'll get our, our front parking lot back in total, um, here, uh, in the next week or so, so they're working to get that cleaned off. It's kind of a race against the weather right now, cause we wanna get everything off those lots, obviously before we get some big snowstorm and things along those lines. Uh, also, uh, related to construction, we are, um, a- after we move into area K, which is the last ten or twelve, uh, math classrooms, we'll be moving out of the mobile classrooms out in the back parking lot. And so starting Monday, I believe it's Monday the twenty-sixth, um, the company will be there to start demobilizing, um, those, uh, or mobilizing, I guess, those classrooms. It's a process because obviously all the power has to be unhooked and, you know, all the jersey barriers, those concrete barriers around, all that stuff has to be removed and so uh, there's some logistics associated with that. And then I think by the end of that week, I think they'll actually be hauling them out of there, isn't that right, Tim? Uh, so that parking lot will be, will be cleared out. Um, if you've noticed on the backside, if you live back there, Bob, uh, lives back there, uh, we are working with another company that wanted more dirt, um, and I think we may end up getting rid of almost all of it, uh, that's in the back. Uh, but one of the things that we did in order to allow them to haul it all, um, basically through about the end of November, is we, we took a credit back on the, uh, sprinklers system that was supposed to go in that part of the project. And then in the spring, we'll reevaluate whether or not we need to continue to run the sprinkler system in there or not, but that allows them to have through the end of November to get that done, because otherwise we were gonna have to stop the, the hauling, get it all graded out and get the sprinkler system up and running, so. Not up and running, but just installed. So they're in the process of, of trying to take, uh, the rest of the, uh, the rest of the dirt out there as much as possible. Uh, so it is starting to clean up i- i- in the back. A lot of the trailers have gone away. Uh, we have made improvements to the, uh, to get ready for girls softball. Varsity softball, be able to use those backfields as their home varsity fields. Uh, we've added some dugouts, uh, fencing. Uh, we're working with the tech ed department. They're gonna be building the roofs on the dugouts, but all the poles are in. We've added the concrete. Uh, some of the stuff we were planning on, you know, kind of raising, uh, money for to try to get done, but we've kinda, um, expedited some of the project to get that done. We've also working with the tech ed department to, um, do the build out of the concession stands, bathrooms, and this, and the press box area. So it turns into be kind of a neat project for our kids to be able to work on things, um, inside that building that's back there, so. Goal is to have everything up and running and ready to go for, for the softball season in the fall.
In the spring?
In the spring, yep, yep, in the spring. So, uh, as far as the, the budgets and things like that, Tim and I had a, uh, conversations today. We're gonna kinda look and see exactly where we're at. We haven't had a, uh, budget update from K A. It's been at least several weeks. Um, so we're trying to work through some of those items and trying to get to the bottom of a couple different, different situations we have on site. We're also trying to make sure that we get some different components of the project, um, corrected before we're releasing retainage. So John Rodel, um, who we've hired, obviously the board's aware of that, uh, we've been working with him to ensure that we are keeping the right amount of retainage back, um, to make sure that we can rectify any situations that haven't been, um, finished yet, not just punchless items, but things that just aren't, aren't quite complete. Um, we're still having some issues with our bleachers. They do come in and out, but they have to, it takes essentially about three people to move them in and out, uh, which, um, that's, we've determined and the architect has determined that's not acceptable and they should be coming in and out on their own with just the push of a button. Uh, so we're in some conversations with, with those folks. They're probably not overly happy with us because the amount of money that we're retaining. Um, and we are finally getting to the point where the lockers have the locks installed on them, so that was a point of, of delay on some of the things. And then what's been happening is the high school's been having their, they have about a weekly meeting. For a while, that was a daily meeting. Now it's turned into a weekly meeting of, you know, teachers have the opportunity to come in, report to Josh Helverson, the system principal there, any of the outstanding issues or things that are going on. They notice in their rooms and things like that, just more eyes on things. And then that gets forwarded on to Kraus and they've been pretty good about getting those things addressed and fixed, so. Working through some of those items, um, as, as we're getting through it. So, you know, we're really, really kinda hoping, you know, the expectation is that, you know, the majority, if not all, the punch lists are done in the next two weeks plus. You know, we moved into the, the new space. I mean, we would expect, you know, final completion at that point. Um, we do have contractors that have been submitting their, their final as-built drawings and their O and M manuals and things like that. Um, so we're, we're getting there, winding down and, and, um, you know, everything is getting scrutinized, um, pretty heavily as far as, you know, change orders and things along those lines, change order requests, so. Um, there's a couple areas we, you know, would like to, would have liked to have done something different, but money's just tight right now, so, um, you know, we're just saying no to a lot of things and it's just one of those things that had we'd known ten, twelve months ago, what we know now, we probably would've said no to other things, you know, ten to twelve months ago, but you just don't quite know. As Rob says, you don't quite know what you don't know, and, um, so we're working through that, but, uh, we're, we're getting there, so.
Questions about construction? Questions?
The areas where the, um, classrooms around the, uh, skylights, are they, I, when we saw them a couple of weeks ago, they were, I mean, she not, I'm not even taking.
So they're getting, they're, they're getting carpet this week. Um, so they're getting carpet this week and then they're working on punching out and finishing things up, uh, at, uh, next week so that we can move in on the twenty-first.
Nick, uh, over the last three months, and I'm only asking now because it's been difficult getting the information otherwise. You know, Gary Ziffco has said that he was gonna provide that, um, uh, point-to-point commissioning report. I've asked him three times.
You've asked him, Tim's asked him, I've asked him.
But I know y'all have.
Yeah, so we're, so that's my knowledge. I have not seen it unless, Tim, you've seen it.
Yeah, I give you a, a quick update. So K F I has looked into it. They're about fifty percent done with that. But, um, we've got a little bit of a holdup with our, uh, automated logic is, is part of the problem, so we're working through that one right now.
Thanks.
So what's happening with a lot of those things is, so we're, we're withholding payments and we're going through on the pay request and of course it's, we're not exactly everybody's favorite people now on, on certain things, but, uh, you know, our, our number one priority is to make sure that we're withholding enough money to make sure that things get done and if contractors walk away, that we have enough money left to complete whatever it is that they walked away from. And so, um, not speaking in specific about any, any one contractor, but it's, um, we're just getting to that kind of, I think, um, less than enjoyable part of the project as we try to settle up, uh, and work through some of these things.
How much longer would you anticipate us keeping John Rodel on?
Um, I, I think, I think, you know, maybe we're looking at maybe a couple more weeks and then if we need to utilize him on a, like a per-call basis, like if we have some questions and different things to, you know, verify. Um, he has been pretty strong in pushing back on some items that, you know, we've been getting bills for and he's saying there's, this is not a, this should not be a school district cost. Um, and kinda pushing different contractors and the construction manager to kinda verify or justify why we're, we're picking up these things or we should be picking up these things. And I'll be honest, uh, Bray has been pushing back quite hard on, on both pay requests and C O Rs and, and, um, been very scrupulous in there, looking at those things, which, you know, has not necessarily painted them into the best picture with some of the contractors too, but, uh, you know, Doug has been very vigilant about looking at those things and, and, and making sure that we're not overpaying for things that aren't done or, that aren't complete yet, so.
We just went around the parking, um, deal. So we've got that area that was in the front and that's where the crane was for the skylight and so forth. Um, do you know how many, approximately how many parking spots that'll open up and how many are gonna be dedicated? I assume that that's gonna be an area for some handicap and visitor parking?
So, uh, that's a hundred and forty-two spots that are inside that area, so it's not just the fenced area, but then you have the driveline areas that had to be created because of it. Uh, so there's a hundred and forty-two spots there. I think it's another forty spots that we pick up in the back lot, um, you know, where the mobile classrooms are. Yeah, some of the, basically that whole front row, um, used to be old door seven, you know, where the temp office is. Almost that whole front row will be a combination of visitor parking, uh, handicap parking, because our, um, maintenance, uh, buildings and grounds department is moving into the old temp office. We decided to leave that temp office space. It puts them more in the center of the district and closer to what's going on, along with our community ed, so people aren't having to drive out here to Brackey Drive to drop things off. Uh, so we wanna make sure we have plenty of spots there for them, for people to be able to stop in, uh, drop stuff off and be able to go, so.
Very good. Any other questions on construction? Otherwise, uh, boundary committee.
So the boundary committee process, um, is, we're, we're getting right into the thick of it, as I'm sure you're all aware. Um, with, uh, occasional emails from folks, we are down to our last boundary committee meeting as far as for the committee on the twenty-seventh of November coming up. Uh, we highly encourage, you know, board members to attend and see what's going on. I think we're getting really close. I think the last, uh, proposal the consultants had, um, solved most of our, or accomplished most of our objectives, uh, with impacting fewer than ten percent of our kids. Um, now, obviously, uh, if you're one of the ten percent impacted, um, it, it impacts you. I mean, it's, 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 whether it's ten percent or fifty percent, it's still impacted you and so there will still be some people that, that aren't happy with it, but, you know, what we're trying to remind people is that, um, you know, there's been a lot of comments about, oh, I thought we were doing this to balance out elementaries and then it looks like they're gonna be unbalanced next year. Well, if you think about the objectives, it's long-term balancing out the elementaries and so it may be pulling kids out of Rivercrest and Rock. Uh, it may load up Prairie, but then what happens is over the course of the next five years, Rivercrest and Rock then build back up and we don't have to add on to those buildings in order to accommodate those kids. And so, um, I think we'll, I think we'll be in a pretty good spot, uh, that way. Um, and trying to remind people of that and, you know, the other piece is, is, you know, there will always be, I, I think, some folks that are upset and that's one of the conversations we have with the committee is, it will be impossible for them to find a solution where there won't be anybody upset or there won't be anybody that says the process wasn't transparent enough or, or whatnot. I mean, so it's just, it's about, it's about finding a solution that, that checks off as many of those boxes as we can. Uh, and one of the boxes obviously is minimal disruption, so that's obviously a, a key as well, so. Um, we're working through it. I, I would anticipate then the board, we have to, um, at Duff Consultants, we talked about potentially doing a separate meeting for the proposal, uh, to the board like in December, so it's not tied to a regular meeting, so it can be kind of the conversation, uh, um, with the boundary committee and the board or representatives from the boundary committee and the consultants and the board. And then the expect, yeah, then the, um, the timeline has this thing going to, uh, the board for approval at the January board meeting. So we've, um, we've bet at seven out of the eight buildings in the district to talk about boundaries, uh, and to update staff on where we're at in the process. You know, obviously there's questions about the boundary exception process. Um, we, I talked a little bit about the new policy related to it. One of the questions was how come there's not an appeal to the board on boundary exceptions? And, uh, you know, one of the things that I highlighted was, one, I think the board's done a nice job, uh, creating an objective set of criteria that basically allows, uh, myself or whoever the designee is to apply the criteria for boundary exceptions. So it's not as subjective as, as people may, may think and so there's really, you know, if we just follow the criteria and the, the priority list, it kinda takes the need to, for that appeal process to go above and beyond and so, um, you know, I think for the most part, people understand that we need to, you know, we need to make these adjustments. I think, um, we're wanting to get to a point where we can start, uh, working with the elementary principals on the transition plans for kids and, and not only that, then also start working on transit, transition plans for staffing. Uh, because staffing will have a lot of moving pieces this spring, uh, depending on, you know, the different buildings and the number of sections and then also the fact that fourth grade can, you know, grandfather into fifth grade type of thing and so we'll have to look at that. But for the most part, I think we're, we're right on track. The consultants are, uh, you know, pretty happy with where we are. I think it's, you know, you kinda seems like you take people one way and then they take people the other way and then eventually they kinda settle down, you know, into a middle that they can say, hey, we've looked at a variety of different options and we think this is probably the best option, uh, with the fewest disruptions for kids, so. Any questions on boundary process?
That committee meeting, next committee meeting would be November twenty-seventh.
November twenty-seventh, Tuesday after Thanksgiving.
And the location again is still Rivercrest at six o'clock?
Yep.
I've got, show of hands, are board members that expect to be able to make that?
Right? It's good. Yep. And, you know, I think it was kinda telling. We had a pretty good gallery, a pretty large gallery for the last committee meeting and then as soon as the revised plan came out, it was amazing, probably about eighty percent left. They got up, they looked at the plan, they saw that, okay, now we're getting closer to being in the right wheelhouse and then, you know, we had a large portion left. I mean, there's still people unhappy. I don't wanna paint it as, this is a, you know, everything's perfect, but, um, I think we're getting, we're getting pretty close. Questions?
Yeah. Nick, you see, um, just given the last public meeting, a need for another public meeting versus a committee meeting, or what are your thoughts?
Well, you know, one of the things that we've been telling people, um, is they always have the option to come speak during the public forum portion of a board meeting. Um, and, and to address the, the boundaries that way. I think, uh, one of the things that, you know, we would suggest to the board and we talked about this at the last boundary committee meeting is, when we set that separate board work session or work, you know, meeting to get the proposal, potentially prior to that, um, prior to that meeting, set up a, you know, public comment portion like we do at the front of this meeting and, and for anybody that wants to provide feedback to the board or, or, or anything that way, um, I think, uh, you know, would be fine. I, it's, it's one of those things where, um, we're getting feedback online and right now when I talk to Tracy, a lot of our feedback has been fours and fives on the latest, uh, rendition, which fours and fives means they like it versus ones and twos. And so, um, I, I think, you know, especially after that whole Willow River thing got cleared up, I think, um, the majority of folks are, are feeling pretty good about it and, and Jamie and I were talking the one day and I said, uh, if, if we have ten percent, we're impacting about ten percent of the families, you know, we're, we're doing pretty well. Um, forty-two percent of the people said, don't do what we did at the high school and we did it anyway, you know, with the referendum. And so I think that's something to keep in mind that all the way through your vote in January, there will be people that will be attacking the process, attacking those involved in the process, the consultants, the committee, the administration. And I think it's important to remember that there's over fifteen hundred elementary families, you know, when you're getting this handful of emails from folks, uh, to kinda put it in perspective, so.
Alright. Anything further on the, uh, elementary boundary process? Then we move on to engagement surveys of staff, parents?
Yep, so, um, the staff engagement survey be ready to go out here. Um, it won't make the Thanksgiving deadline. It'll go between Thanksgiving and Christmas. The, uh, parent engagement survey, uh, we were gonna discuss that in prin- uh, principal and cabinet, um, on Wednesday last week, but, uh, we just, we ran out of time and, uh, we have a base survey from school perceptions. We just wanna make sure we run through it with the building principals too to feel like it's getting to the questions that they may have and, and answers that they would like, data they would like. And so, uh, we have our next principal and cabinet meeting. Is that coming, is that next week, Dave? Do you have Hudson Learn next week and then Principal's cabinet? So on Monday, uh, next week, uh, it'll be on the agenda. Once that's rolling, then we'll be able to get that survey out, uh, to parents, hopefully again, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, uh, to start getting feedback. And then, um, as we kinda work through that, we'll hopefully be able to get some reports that we can get to the board and give you guys coming. reports that we can get to the board and give you guys coming updated where we're at. So.
So more than likely it would be the January action meeting that we'd get a report?
Uh, probably maybe January work session. I mean, it's probably more of a, more of a dialogue conversation type of thing, you know, because you're not actually taking any action on it. So we'll probably tie it to maybe the January work session to be able to say, you know, here's a, kind of where we're at, uh, with the different engagement surveys. And, you know, here's kind of some of the plans we have in place that we're planning on to adjust or, or make.
I know the agenda specifically referenced, uh, staff and parent. What about the student?
Student one is complete. We had, I think, twenty-five, twenty-five hundred, uh, student, or no, it was more than that. It was, I think it was twenty-eight hundred student responses. Uh, so.
Which grades?
What's that?
Which grades?
Uh, grades five through, five through twelve. So we had a really, a really high student response rate. Uh, I think at the high school, we had over fifteen hundred. Middle school, we had over eleven hundred. And the elementaries are running about ninety, ninety-five percent response rate. So we have not gotten that data back from Gallup yet. We anticipate getting that back in the next, uh, week. And, uh, that is, that's a, that's a survey window. So that's why you get it all back at the same time. Whereas the, the Q, the Gallup Q twelve for the employee engagement, uh, that can be given any time. And then the other, uh, the parent engagement service can be given any time. And we'll get real-time data on those items.
And the parent one is the school perceptions one?
Yes.
All right. And the other two are Gallup?
Yep.
Got it. Yes.
Nick, does that parent survey go to all parents or does it?
No, that, that will go to all parents. And so what we'll do is we have to work with school perception. So we load in all of the parent email addresses that we have. And then it, what'll happen is they get a, um, a unique link in the email, the way they send it out. And so when the parent clicks on the email, they take the survey. It's not to track back to a parent, but what it does is it allows us to know which emails still haven't responded. So then when we send a blast out again to say, hey, can you please fill out the survey, we're not sending it to the same people over and over again. So, um, you know, we'll be, we're able to say in the second email, you know, the reason you're receiving this email is because we didn't, you know, you didn't fill it out the last time. Uh, school perceptions has said they have a real high, uh, you know, feedback rate or return rate when they do it that way. So it's not to tie it back to a kid or an individual parent. It's just purely to make sure we can generate, uh, responses. And as we talked about, um, you know, community engagement survey, at least, you know, the count, first of all, um, uh, Gallup doesn't even do one. They don't even have one. And school perception said, as of right now, unless you're asking about money and like raising a, you know, for a referendum or something like that, you could expect somewhere between a one and two percent return rate on a, on a community survey. And, you know, their advice at this point would be, your best feedback's going to be from your parent engagement survey more than your community engagement survey. So.
Any other questions? All right. I'm not seeing any. So now we move on to reports. We have one report on, um, the secondary math curriculum. I think we have some people here talk about that.
Tonight's curriculum update from teaching and learning is the area of secondary mathematics. Secondary curriculum specialist Mary Beth Elliott and John Hilding will be sharing the curriculum improvement process that six twelve mathematics went through to examine math practices and performance and adjustments that were made to strengthen our mathematics curriculum, instruction and assessment. I want to say a huge thank you to John and Mary Beth, who did an outstanding job of facilitating the work and empowering staff throughout the process. Math is one of the areas that in, through assessment, is assessed on the forward in grades three through eight, on the ACT Aspire in grades nine and ten, the ACT in grade eleven, and the N W A MAP in grades K through eight. So John and Mary Beth will let you share the process. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I want to thank the board for giving us this opportunity to share the work that we've been doing with our six twelve math team. Most of you are familiar with the curriculum improvement process, but for us, what that's been is that's really been a four-year process. Uh, Mary Beth and I started with our six twelve teachers, um, about four years ago, doing a book study. And what we realized was that was the first time that the middle school and high school teachers had joined forces and had serious discussions in quite a while. And so it was really fun to bring them together. In fact, many of them didn't even know each other because they've been in separate buildings, new hires and things like this. And so, but that first year was really devoted to developing some common vision through our math teachers. In the second year, we continued working with vision and program evaluation. We conducted surveys, we looked at data and just saw what is the current state of our math program. Based on that, what we did then is in the third year, we did a lot of planning. Uh, we worked on assessment, particularly, um, the idea of what is it that we would want our students to be able to show at each level based on standards, national standards and state standards? And how are we going to get the students there? And then that year, we also did an extensive resource review and ended up choosing, uh, new resources. And then this year, what we're doing is we're implementing. Now, basically, one of the books that helped us a good deal was published by the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. It was called Principles to Actions. And in that book, their theme is that effective teaching is a non-negotiable. And there are certain pillars that we can really focus on to make our teaching more effective. And those pillars are every math student needs to have foundational skill. We know that there's a certain amount of skill that's needed to be an effective mathematician. We also know that it has to be in the context of applications and there has to be solid conceptual development.
And so when we looked at math resources, we were really focusing on building ma, continuing to build the math confidence through the K twelve spectrum. Um, and the elementary continued and updated their math curric, their math resource to, um, the Everyday Math Fourth Edition. At the middle school then, just to continue with the conceptual understanding, we chose C P M, uh, kept with McGrath Hill for nine twelve and then Pearson Products for our, um, A P courses. And all of these resources that we chose have our, uh, aligned with the Wisconsin standards, as well as are research-based and field-tested, most of them for over thirty years. And they all have a print and online component, which has been super effective in helping with the parent connections at home.
Now, on this next slide, some of you may have seen this Venn diagram before. Uh, but really, I, we wanted to highlight it again because in our work with the math teachers, it was very important for us to think of math not being isolated from the other core areas. And so in here, we see that there are strong connections between math, science and E L A. And if we look at the standards that have come out, uh, nationally, what you'll find is that there's a lot of overlap. And in the middle, in particular, is, um, on all three, there's a strong statement about constructing viable arguments and also engaging in arguments from evidence. And so what we did when we looked at the resources, we made sure that that component was going to come through clearly. Um, for example, if you look at this word problem, what you may notice is that in the past, this word problem may have been in a textbook and the textbook publishers may have guided the students through A, B, C, D and come up with a single solution. And yet, if you look at that, there really are many solutions. If you think about questions such as, should everyone pay the same amount? Who should pay? If the teachers are working, would they be expected to pay for their own ticket? Is, how about the bus expense? Who picks that up? And so the idea here is that the students would need to construct an argument for their solution. And there could be multiple correct solutions, but it would be based on the logic that they're able to articulate.
That's a great problem to go through with a room full of six twelve math teachers, which is what John and I did during one of the reviews.
Absolutely.
Was a little painful. But, um, we continue.
Oh, I love it.
We're continuing to support the teachers. Um, John and I continue with instructional coaching and we have technology coaches in the building that are helping with some of the technology integration because of the online resources. Um, we continue to have the math six twelve meetings, our weekly, uh, P L C professional learning communities that all of our grade level teachers belong to and work with. And then each one of those companies provide an ongoing implementation support. So really partnering with John and I to make sure that implementation is happening and is going well and teachers are feeling successful. And the learning or the key lessons that John and I had through all of this, uh, curriculum review was, uh, that the teachers, the teacher leadership was key. We really worked a lot with the teachers in develop, in choosing the resource. Um, and then they're, they continue to give us feedback through teaching and learning, but their clarity and consistency of creating that really great system-wide K twelve program that we're working on. And then our goal is to build confident math students at the end of their H S D career here.
Yeah. We, we find that to be just really key to the whole thing is we want students to feel as though they can be successful in studying mathematics and feel that from kindergarten all the way up through twelfth grade and hopefully send them out through that. And the way we are looking to ensure that, um, is we will continue to monitor our external assessments, things such as the forward, the N W E A, Aspire A C T, and make sure that we're getting the results that we feel we should. Um, but we're also working directly with teachers to, uh, really strengthen their common unit assessments and then, uh, look at scaffold assessments. And what we mean by that are simply, um, checks for understanding along the way that will ensure that students are getting to the, to a point where they can be successful on those summative assessments. And so we like, again, would just like to thank you for the opportunity to share this. Are there any questions that you have for either Mary Beth or I?
Mr. President, I have a question. Um, so, um, I was just curious, you said that you had a, a very interesting experience. Was it, uh, sixth grade teachers or when you, uh, tried to have them talk about constructing a viable argument? What would range of grades were those teachers? I'm just curious.
That was a six twelve meeting.
Six twelve, okay.
And that problem that I showed you was actually captivated math teachers six twelve, because what they began to do was they began to discuss the different parameters of the problem.
Right.
And what would be fair, what would be equitable, things like this. And what they came to realize is that it was not so much a single solution that they were looking at, but rather what was the, what evidence could they give to their argument?
So would, would this, um, can this, uh, discussion be aimed more for a setting of math teachers or teachers rather than, this isn't something that would appear on an assessment test for students?
No, this would be something that we would be doing in class with the kids.
Okay. And then do they have an opportunity to, I mean, is it a discussion-oriented experience?
Right.
So they can ask questions about assumptions and so on?
Yeah. Typically in a classroom, what you would see is that, um, a problem like this would be presented and the students may work in small groups first to come up with constructing an argument. And then they would share those arguments with the large class and, and what, and gain, um, kind of the insight that there really could be multiple answers. And really in their small group, many times they start asking questions about, well, what about this and what about this? And so as a teacher, you would say, well, what do you think? What would happen if you took that assumption rather than so?
I know Mr. Erickson always begins with assumptions when he talks to us about budget.
Dave? So this, this problem, this example that they bring is a really good example. Sometimes there's some confusion out there where people hear about, um, about the way we might be teaching math and it may be different from the way they learned it in the past. An assumption that the right answer isn't important. This is a good example. It's that there are multiple right answers. Not that correct isn't important. Correct is still obviously very important, but there are multiple ways to get there. And the explanation that goes along is equally important as the final solution.
Mr. President?
Right. Yes, Rob.
So just, uh, slide six talks about what tools are teachers use to deliver the curriculum. And apparently there are a, a couple. I'm personally familiar with one of our math courses where textbooks are no longer allowed. They had to use the online tool. How are we preparing our students to study solely through their Chromebook versus having their textbooks available if they're no longer available?
At all levels, there are both Chromebooks and textbooks. That there are textbooks that they can check out at all levels. Um, they are, uh, but it's on a, a limited basis. It wouldn't be that they would check it out for the school year. But if there are situations where, um, circumstances for the student are such that they need a textbook for a few days, they can get that. Um, but we are shifting and the teachers made the decision to, uh, really shift over to more online materials because the online materials actually now, um, bring the textbook alive in a lot of ways. And part of the training that we're doing this fall is helping the teachers translate that. We're not there totally yet, but I think we're, we're getting there.
Heather?
Mr. President, I just quickly want to, I love the focus on building confidence. And, um, just to, to put it into a, like, what does it actually look like? So I have a sixth grader and to have it be okay in homework to write, it depends, as the answer to a math question, which was what happened this week. It depends. And as long, like, kind of it's an okay answer as long as you're thinking and have a well-thought-out question. And that's not, that's still complete homework. So to have, that there's not always a right answer. Sometimes you need to ask questions before you get to the right answer. As a parent, it's very different than how we learned math. But I love that it's focused on getting kids confident about asking questions and being able to get to an answer, even if it's a different route than the person sitting next to them might have taken. So I appreciate that focus. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would say math is getting a lot closer to art.
Well, if we do paint by numbers, I guess we would, right? All right. Is there any other questions? All right. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your work. All right. Now we're on to the action portion of the agenda. And we lead off with consent agenda and then, uh, pain of the bills and the amount indicated on the motion. So I entertain one.
Mr. President, move to approve of the consent items and that the chief financial officer and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of four million four hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-one cents.
Second. All right. There's been a motion and a second. And hearing none of the items from the action being pulled. And we vote on all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Um, and so we move on to the school calendar. I assume that this is Dave since he's led this discussion for five years plus that I've been on the board. So.
Yep. Thank you very much. So, um, we brought the school calendar view at the last work session. This calendar that you'll see is, um, exactly the same. There are no changes. You asked me to review or to explore one possible change and we looked into that, the idea possibly starting earlier. Um, checked with D P I and they let us know that there are four reasons why you can start earlier. And we do not meet any of those criteria. It's major construction, force of nature. Um, we might be able to argue that with a few people around the table, but force of nature, excessive cost associated with transportation of pupils in private schools and participation in, uh, international baccalaureate program. We don't meet any of those. Um, not quite sure if other districts are working around that, but we don't meet any of those. So this calendar represents, um, exactly what we saw the last time. Since then, we brought it to seven of the eight schools, as Nick mentioned earlier, with our forums. Um, a few questions on the calendar. The only one that actually, the only specific question was about days, um, associated with conferences. So because we have conference, evening conferences, um, teachers work a hundred and ninety-two days. Two of those days are considered, um, the conference evening. So the question is, do we have a day off right around conferences? Some years we don't, some, or some years we do, some years we don't. Sometimes those days are just essentially at the end of the year, meaning we would end two days earlier. Other than that, not a lot of questions at all on the calendar. Um, and I think people were appreciative of the fact that we went back to that survey that we did in twenty fifteen, sixteen and made some adjustments based on the feedback that we received. Questions about the calendar?
Well, I think again, fundamental understanding is the complexity of taking a quarter semester system for the, uh, high school and then mixing it with the trimester system at the other levels and making things try to, to even out. Um, and, you know, for years, we did the altera, alternating spring break, which is, seems to be, uh, the most powerful. When we did the survey on this, what was it, three years ago, that seemed to be one of the big things is, uh, make, uh, be, try to be consistent in spring break and give as much advance notice as possible. And, um, what we run into in March is that A C T test and, and then the ability to make up the test because not everybody takes it that first time. So as a result, we've got spring break being the last being the last full week of March. And that's the latest that I can remember it, even when my kids started in Hudson School District, which would be probably 1991, but.
That was received very well by the staff too when we shared that one. Because like you said, that's different than what we're used to, but that was well received.
Yeah, Carrie.
For the early release and late start, were those completely eliminated or are these just around holidays that they fill in?
Just the late starts. So the late starts were professional development days. So two hours that was dedicated to teacher professional learning. The early releases, we still have those. Those are linked to grading times when teachers work on report cards. So those would still exist.
Okay. Thank you.
And we end up with seniors being done on, is it Thursday or Friday before graduation?
We actually haven't determined the exact date for seniors to be done yet. We still need to work with Mark Cumlin who runs the hours to make sure everything matches up the way it needs to, but before graduation.
But just the way that Memorial Day falls this year, we're basically going to have, students will be in school two full weeks after Memorial Day.
Correct.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, I entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the 2019, 2020 calendar. Second.
Okay. And here we are in November approving the calendar for 1920. Is this, now that we've got, getting the construction out of the way and whatnot, is this when we expect to approve it in future years?
This is about what we'd expect. Again, we need to wait until DPI locks in those dates for the ACT. We have no control over when that happens. If it happens on the schedule that they have right now, this would be right about the time that we'd be bringing the calendar for approval.
Right. But we've kind of learned our lesson not to lock it in before that date.
Uh, yes.
So, all right. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the calendar as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion has it, and the calendar is approved. Next up is teacher salary structure 2.0. Is this Andrea?
Yes.
With help from other areas that we might have with budget impact and whatnot, but you have the floor.
Yep. So what we have here is the presentation that we've been presenting to the building forums. And we have completed seven of the eight, like they said, the forums. And it's exactly as we discussed at the board work session. I'm happy to cover the components in more detail, but also don't want to rehash everything that was discussed at the work session. So otherwise, again, it lays out the changes, it lays out what's new, and then gives some examples at the end in terms of the financial impact for our staff.
So you're looking for, for questions?
Questions, yep, about this. And then hopeful that the board will, this is just the, you already had done the structural modifications. And now this is the financial overlay onto that structure.
Right. But, but the major differences is being, we're increasing the entry level pay?
We are increasing the entry level pay from, to 45 and 48, $45,000 for a bachelor's degree and $48,000 for a master's degree. And so we'll be bringing people up to that floor, existing staff, but not making further adjustments at this time. And then the other big change is that we now have the set amounts for the standard advancement increase as well as the enhanced percentage increase, the standard advancement increase or SAI being 750 per distinguished standard and a cap of 70 and 75. And then the enhanced percentage increase, .2%, .2% per distinguished standard with a cap of 70 and 75 as well. So that's, those are some of the key pieces.
Mr. President, I have a question for Andrea. So this PowerPoint, is this basically what you'll be taking to each building when you're explaining it?
It's what we have rolled out tentatively based on the board generally.
Okay. I, I think it's very clear. I, I like, I have to say, I like the little moments of lightness in here. I, I think, I think that, I mean, and I, I'm really not being facetious because I think that it just helps to lay a sense of receptivity. And anyway, I, I, I was very impressed with your PowerPoint.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
So Andrea, the individuals that are over 75, they have the, the four plus?
Distinguished standards, yes.
Thank you. Are they, are they frozen forever?
They are not frozen. So this is a really important point that I make with the staff is that under the old Stephson Lane system, they were always, there was always a salary cap. It just was never publicized as a cap because once you hit that MA 32 in step 13, you didn't get anything more until, unless the board did a percent per cell increase. And so we have less than that now because of the fact that we have not put a cap in on the board approved percentage increase. So the only caps we have are elements of the structure, primarily the performance piece. That's the 70 and $75,000 caps. There is no cap on the performance or on the board approved percentage increase, which will increase the top end at a higher rate than they would have had in the old structure.
So are we, given where this is at, and you're an expert, so I'm going to ask the question, are we going to lose teachers to the, to Minnesota with these changes? Or are we, are we better?
It depends on the teacher. I think at the high end, we're at the high end. And that's also been a big talking point we've making to our staff is that, and I have it in here as well, that's 75 to 92 range. I feel like we won't lose many of them because that in combination with the retirement benefits or in health insurance is a great package, phenomenal package. But those in the middle group who've had relatively little movement for five, six, seven years, they could be vulnerable for Minnesota schools for sure. But we're cognizant of that. We're watching it closely. I've already been meeting with four of them. As this is rolled out, they want, they have a lot of questions. And I totally understand it. It's just, there's also limited dollars available. And so it's that constant balancing act with the dollars available and how we can allocate them, which is one reason we put the caps in place. And the deprioritization of the standards, I really think will benefit that middle group because if they have one or two distinguished standards where they wouldn't have gotten anything under TSS 1.0, they will get increases. SAI and EPI enter the system. So I'm hopeful.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
When you go to the different schools with, will you be prepared for any teachers that come forward with questions to give them their exact number that they could achieve?
Well, we, when we have, because we've done seven of the forums. And so the questions that we get are typically bigger, you know, about.
Oh, so you're not going to have, I'm sorry, you're not going to meet with individual?
We are after that. So what I talk about at the forum is that we're setting up office hours. So whether it's office hours or I'm also open with setting up appointments. Again, I've been meeting quite a few already, where we do our best to either go to the building and set up times, or they can come meet with me or email me, whatever vehicle is possible. The other thing is after, if the board approves it tonight, Mark Cumlin and Tim are working on a calculator that we'll send out to staff too, that they can put their own information in and see how it plays out. So we try a variety of different ways to make sure the staff get the information they need.
Okay. I, I was totally on board with the math situation earlier, but this is somewhat confusing. So that'd be good.
Oh, yes. I had to explain it at North Hudson and I failed. But no, Tim is much better at explaining the examples.
But a calculator would be great for the teachers.
The calculator, yeah, that'll, that'll come out as soon as you take action on this. We'll start working and developing that. And that will give people an idea of, of where they'll fall. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? Again, this is something that getting rid of the pro one, pro two, pro three met with some great enthusiasm.
Yes.
General acceptance.
Yeah, I would say that the structural changes were well received. The caps were not as well received, which is why we have a completely different slide to discuss, discuss why the caps are needed at this time. We have a lot of really veteran staff and we also have a lot of new staff. And so it, the, the cap conversation is a little tougher. But I think overall, they understand the why. They just may not like it for their particular situation.
But there's, and there, once they attain a level, there's no regression then?
Right. Which is another point we emphasize with the colors on there, that it's forward movement only. And the good thing with this system, in my opinion, is that it's base building. It's not stipends. So with it being base building and forward movement only, the movement's real. And so we've heard from the surveys that reliability, predictability is really important so that they can plan for their family. And I think this is, this accomplishes that more so than 1.0. Because they know what they did last time with their, they know where their current salary is. They know where they performed in terms of the educator effectiveness system. And now with the amount per standards, I think it's a much more reliable system. Then we'll learn some more, I'm sure, with 2.0.
I'm sorry, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Just to clarify, it, it's only forward moving unless you're in a situation where you have a stipend that could in future years not need that?
The market-based stipends is the one piece that we make very clear, even in the letters.
That's one thing could be taken away.
Yeah. So all the other circles are base building. But the one component that we are clear on is stipends is the piece that is not. Yes, sorry. Good clarification. Oh, and then we have modified the payout so that previously, for the first three learning years, they were paid out during the course of their contract. We are now changing that so that they're not reliant upon that money and making it a, a one-time or two-time payment. So that it's just a, a, a amount of money as compared to something, again, prorated throughout the check.
You're talking about stipend now?
Stipends, the market-based stipends, yeah.
How those are paid. All right. Very good. All right. Is there any further discussion, questions, concerns? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion is to approve the TSS 2.0 as presented with all of the various caps and whatnot without change, I guess. No one has suggested any of that. And so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Next up on the agenda is the virtual school coordinator position. Who's taking the lead on this?
I will take that.
All right.
All right. So we discussed this at the last work session as well, the idea of putting together a position to help facilitate and lead the development of our virtual school options. So this is a draft of a potential job description. And a couple of things to note about this position. So first of all, we'd anticipate a salary range between $65,000 and $70,000. That'd be salary. So total cost about $90,000. We would anticipate that if we could bring 12 of our students back, that would cover that level of investment. Now, of course, there would be other expenses associated with that, but we do believe that all in the virtual school would be a cost neutral investment.
Okay. When you say bring our students, 12, back in, mention how that works on open enrollment.
Yep. So right now, we have several kids that open enroll out of our school district into other virtual school options. Some close by, some that are pretty far away. Because it's virtual, it doesn't really matter where they are. We're, we're talking well over, I think we have 40 students last year that were open enrolled out into virtual offerings. Every student that leaves our district, there is a cost associated with that. It's about $7,500. So if we could keep those students here, that would be great financially. But more importantly, it's just good for our kids. Again, the most important thing about our virtual school offering that we're looking to build is that we want to create a situation where we can meet the needs of all of our students. It breaks our heart when we have a student tell us that they don't feel their needs can be met in our school and we're not the best option for them. We want to make sure we're the best option for all of our kids.
And, and I don't want to generalize, you know, over generalize too much, but what would be some of the reasons that, that students choose the virtual school option?
Yeah. And it's, it's a great question, the way you set it up, because you can't generalize. There are a lot of reasons, but I'll share a couple. Sometimes it's for a very specific interest, athletics that, specialized athletics, something like that. Sometimes it's more for stress and anxiety associated with going to school in a brick and mortar setting. Those are some of the most common, but there are a variety of other reasons. It, it used to be more challenging because the open enrollment laws were a little more strict. Now that they loosened up, it's opened up an opportunity for a lot of kids and for districts.
And I don't have those numbers in front of me, but that for, approximately 40 that are doing this for virtual school reasons represents what percentage overall, do you know, on the open enroll outs?
Oh, I could, I could tell you. I have that information.
Sounds like it's about a third, but I might be off.
Well, so it is about, it's, well, last year is closer to two thirds, actually, were virtual. Last year's probably the best way to go because even when I shared this at the work session, the numbers have changed for this year already because we have more applications coming in. So looking at 17, 18, we had a total of 64. And like I said, close to 40 of those were virtual. Some, some.
Sorry, any of those AP?
AP students?
No, are they, are there AP courses?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Yep, absolutely. Yes. Yeah. In fact, we currently have students that, that stay in Hudson that take additional AP courses that we can't offer in our schools through a virtual offering.
That was going to be my question. So even a, a student who is attending the high school could, could opt for some coursework?
Absolutely. And that's one of the best things about bringing this program to, to our own school. We can completely open up that spectrum of services and offer any level of blended opportunity. If there's, if there's a specific class that a student wants to take that they can't take within our setting, we could potentially offer that virtually. It, it opens up a lot of options. So we would anticipate many students that would opt for some level of blended learning environment, blended between virtual and brick and mortar.
And I know we're in the process of examining our comparables and whatnot, but for those schools that have a reputation for being higher achieving, is there, are there many, any, some that have virtual schools?
I, I don't have the specifics on that. What I can say is that we know how many virtual schools there are. It's interesting, they, they tend to be concentrated in our area. I was surprised when we ran the data from DPI on that, that there were, I believe the number was 39, but don't quote me on that. I have to look back in my notes, virtual schools in the state. I thought the number would be higher, given the fact that we have several right around here, but geography plays into that quite a bit. What I do know is many of our high performing comparable districts have many online offerings. I don't know if they necessarily then go to the level of having a virtual online charter school, but definitely have online offerings.
But this is a coordinator position, not necessarily administrative or administration level increasing the, but this person would report to you? Is that?
Yes, that, that'd be correct.
Okay. So again, kind of adding to your reports, right, the people that report to you, but.
Yes.
You know, maybe offloading some of those attempts to try and get this off the ground.
And that's exactly it. I mean, this is, this is, it's a heavy lift to get this going. And we know that the coordinator position would absolutely be necessary if we were to launch. We just feel that if we, if there's a chance that someone would be interested, a highly qualified individual interested in this position now, I think it benefits us to give it a try. Because if we can get this going faster, that just sets it up to be a, a higher quality program right from the launch.
All right.
I was just wondering if, if this being a coordinator position, if there is a kind of a high level person who's done this before in other districts, is that a, a standard position as coordinator? Or would there be required to come in higher? Also, depending on the number of students involved in the online program, would that, what's, what's your vision about that need to increase staff down the road too, or?
Yeah. So good, two, two questions there. The first one is, are there virtual school coordinators out there? Is that a common position? The answer is yes, depending on the size of the program. Usually, once it gets to a certain point, that's necessary. What many districts will do, and honestly, what we would plan on doing, is the coordinator also does teaching. They would have to be a licensed teacher because they would be doing some teaching and providing direct service. So it's, there's a sort of a quasi-administrative function where they're doing the, the management of the program, but then there's also the instructional side. So often what will happen is they'll start very small and have a teacher that will have like some release time essentially to, to offer some support. But when it grows, then it grows into that coordinator position. Having said that, those are small districts that we've talked to. We're a larger district. We feel that we have a strong chance of, of having many of our kids stay with us. So we would essentially be a large virtual offering right off the bat. Second question was remind, oh, the FTE. We, we would hope so, but that would be offset by the fact that we'd be bringing those students in. So if we expand, we'd expand according to the student need. So as we bring in more students, we talked about this last time, if we get to the point of having a virtual charter school, that means we can offer open enroll into our district as well. So if we start bringing in more kids then, and that would necessitate more teachers, then yes, FTE would go up, but that would be offset by the aid associated with those students.
All right. Any other questions on this?
My, my question was similar.
All right. Well, then with that, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we hire a coordinator for the virtual, virtual school.
Second.
All right. Motion by Sue, second by Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion. The motion passes. Final item on our action before we entertain the motion for closed session is select a WASB delegate and alternate delegate for state convention.
I thought this is what all those people were here for at the beginning of the meeting, to see which one of you were going to get this honor. So I believe last year it was, Heather?
Well, I was under the impression that that was an honor that was almost automatically bestowed upon the newest member of the board because it's such an incredible experience at state conventions. So I don't know if we need discussion, really, if Bob's going to state convention because...
I second your nomination.
It has been the, the practice that the person with the least background and knowledge of what they're getting into gets appointed. So, but, you know, I, I think that we're going to have some good attendance compared to the first couple of years in the board, where we had only one or two.
I, I think, as of right now, is everybody planning on going at this point? I think this, this will be, this will be great. So any one of you could be bestowed this honor now that we know that. But there is, I think there's a nomination on the floor for Bob.
I would be delighted to formally nominate Bob to be our delegate at state convention.
I think he was part of the deal.
All right. Well, Bob, do you, do you accept?
I do, with everybody's...
All right, so you would accept that? And, and I would nominate Rob as the delegate alternate, so.
I would second that.
Okay.
Quick to second, yes. The Bobs.
Bob and Robs. Is there, is there any further nominations? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve as nominated.
So moved.
All right. Based on the motion, a second, all those in favor of electing Bob the delegate and Rob the alternate, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Yes?
The board will entertain a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent one, parent N, to consider the personal histories of specific persons related to administrative staffing, where, if discussed in public, would likely, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories.
All right. This requires the roll call vote. We got the alphabetic order. Bowman?
Aye.